And start the meeting.
Let me just get you on YouTube. Give me one minute.
Now I'm gonna do is I'll do the screen share. So we've got a flag up.
Get a new do there, Lyons? You're looking good.
I got an appointment to get my hair done today. I was like.
Nice. I sent out the YouTube link earlier. Dope.
I'll keep trying throughout the meeting, but.
Sometimes it unsticks.
It's just, it's something, there's something wrong with YouTube itself.
Okay.
So you're good to start, Peggy.
Okay. All right. Welcome, everybody, to the regular meeting of the Board of Selectmen this Monday, June 22. Please all rise for the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance.
Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, thank you.
One of these times, we're all going to get it in sync. That is so hard.
I know. I don't know if it's possible, actually, with all the echoes. So I'm looking, I gotta get, I got shine in my face here. All right. So moving on to may have a motion to approve the minutes of the June 8, 2020 Board of Selectmen meeting.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, any discussion changes, amendments? No? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
All right, great. Minutes approved. Moving on to my update, I'll keep it real quick. We entered into Phase Two last week on June 17, which means a number of businesses in our town and our state can open. The governor also amended his social gathering restrictions, allowing indoor activities of up to 25 people and outdoor of up to 100. Our Long-Term Recovery Committee now is fully operating and mostly populated. I think they're still looking for a few volunteers and some of the different resource groups, but they've been assisting with community requests. And again, we've been getting some good feedback from different businesses and organizations in town. So I think that's starting to work smoothly. In terms of town operations, we're still appointment only. And we're revisiting our policy about opening for public access probably is not going to start until August 1. And there's a lot of different issues, but we're kind of discussing with senior staff about what is practical about having open door policy to Town Hall and whether it's the right time to launch that right now. But we're thinking it's probably going to be August 1 before we move to that. And that's very similar with a lot of other towns in the state. And then we've also been talking about technology policies as we go towards normal boards and commission meetings, you know, after the emergency orders expire, which would be this fall, and how we can continue to offer, I think, this convenience for the public to attend meetings through Zoom. So it's unclear if we're going to have to go back to, you know, the standard FOIA requirements again, which would require in-person. If we do do that, we would want to somehow create this opportunity again for people to participate virtually. And we've just had a lot of positive feedback to that. And I think also the boards and commissions like it, too. So we're going through that thought process about what it would cost, how we would keep this going forward.
They like the virtual thing? Is that what you're saying?
Yes, yeah, the virtual thing. I mean, I think some people are eager to come back into seeing meetings that aren't as technology savvy, or they just like to come into Town Hall. But to offer both, I think, would be a great asset. And particularly for the, you know, smaller boards where it's, you know, to get more volunteers, where that people don't, if they're busy traveling, you know, it's really hard to get to Town Hall. And then you end up missing too many meetings. And that gives a lot more flexibility for volunteers. In terms of our town facilities, our beaches, parks, playgrounds, and tennis courts are open. The town gym is closed currently, but we're going to be reviewing policies about some of our other facilities during, over this next week. The senior center is closed. I mean, we still have staff there and they're still doing Meals on Wheels. Also, some other employees, Madison Youth and Family Services is using some of the offices in that building. But the state has really recommended that anything serving that vulnerable population not be opened right now. And we're waiting for further guidance on that. And they're talking about it might be the fall before they would start, start up any kind of programming or activities at senior centers throughout the state. Memorial Town Hall is another thing. We're going to have to revisit the policy. Do we allow rentals in the building? You know, I know there's a church organization that uses the upstairs. So we're going to kind of review some of that now and see whether or not we're wanting to open up some of those buildings again for public access and at least to rent space in the building. So we're in the process of doing that. And then I'll talk.
Can I ask you a quick question on the buildings here?
Yeah.
Not to put you on the spot, but I'm gonna. The Chamber Building, I'm noticing that we don't list it here. And obviously, it's considered a town building, but it's sort of a private entity. How does that work in the context of being open or not being open? And do they follow the same guidance that we follow?
Yeah, we kind of have the same, you know, we have a number of buildings like that, right? Memorial Town Hall, for example, has non-town groups using that. And that's going to be part of the discussion. I didn't list the Chamber here, but, and I didn't list the Arts Barn. I just was kind of, but those are all things I think we have to think through about public access. You know, the Chamber has tended to operate more independently a lot of times. But I think that, you know, one of the things that we've had to implement, for example, in Memorial Town Hall, the probate court is going to have to allow public access. So, you know, and so we've actually having to make some, doing some modifications, putting in Plexigath shielding, all that stuff into that facility. And they're going to be starting to see public, have public attend court hearings and things like that, I think, starting in July. So, but you're right. I mean, this isn't an all-inclusive list, but I think that Arts Barn is starting to have camps, you know, they're operating that. I know they're interested in having some other types of activities that might be broader. But right now, we're keeping it focused on camps where you're limiting the numbers, you know, and there's those protocols that have to be followed. So, so yeah, it's now, now the time is to start thinking about all those things. Absolutely. And the Chamber probably would have to have the same kind of setups, you know, that we would expect at some of our other town facilities. Because we also have a visitor center. That is, there's the Chamber, but then there's actually a visitor center, too. So.
Is the visitor center run by us?
We have a volunteer that runs the visitor center. It's kind of together with the Chamber, but I think there's a woman, I forget, I did meet her briefly before COVID hit to talk about the visitor center and staffing. And to be honest, I think one of the, the things that I learned from, from her was that, you know, traffic has just gone down a lot because a lot of people just use their phones for information now. So there's not that need to come in and get a Mac, you know, to learn about things. But, so she's seen a little bit of a downtrend in traffic. But anyway, that's a whole separate topic. But, yes, so we need to go through each of these facilities and just figure out how we're going to open them and, and under what conditions we would do that. So, and then we'll talk more about the beaches. Scott is going to be joining us. And we'll talk more about some of the things surrounding the beaches and the facilities there. So that's it for my update. Any liaison reports or selectman comments?
I have a couple.
Go ahead.
So the library, I don't know if folks have seen the update that came out to the library patrons. I may just read a portion of it here, just to keep it easy. As you know, the current pandemic has affected all of us in many ways. While the construction at the Scranton Library was able to continue throughout the spring, our timeline for completion was negatively impacted. While we put the finishing touches on our new and improved library facility, we want to share an update with you regarding our opening plans. The decision about when and how to reopen our library's doors to visitors will be based on careful evaluation by our library administrative staff, in concert with the Board of Trustees, advice from the public, health experts, the physical characteristics of our building and our staff, and our staff levels, as well as guidelines from the state of Connecticut. Our commitment is to only move forward with the reopening once we are confident that we can safeguard the health of our staff and our visitors. Here are some of the issues we are working to address in order to make the Scranton Library safe to all. And they list a host of things here like provision of adequate personnel, protective equipment for library staff and visitors, procedures and adequate supplies to disinfect shared services, shared services multiple times a day, limit on the number of people in the building, possible limits on the amount of time visitors spend here, adequate physical separation of computer users, redesign or suspension of events that bring in large groups, redesign or adaptation of places where people interact face-to-face, and staffing levels necessary to ensure the above guidelines are met. So they're obviously anxious to get, get going and get the library back open, but aren't going to pull the trigger until they feel comfortable that the plan is in place. So I will make sure this gets submitted into our minutes. This was submitted to the library patrons on June 17. My second update is from Madison Youth and Family Services. And Scott Cochran sent me just a quick highlight here. He says that he'd like me to share that our COVID impact assistance programs continues to be available for any Madison resident who has been financially impacted by COVID. As in the eight weeks we have run the program, we've received 37 applications, 30 separate households, and dispersed $16,300. The program is funded by a large donation from Neighbor to Neighbor and the Guilford Savings Bank. We will continue to run this program until the funding is exhausted. Applications are available through the town website or by contacting Madison Youth and Family Services. We also have a camp scholarship funding available for families that financially qualify. And that is from Scott Cochran, the director of Madison Youth and Family Services. And then my last update is Board of Education. And obviously, they're, they had their last meeting right before graduation on Tuesday, and it was Tom Skreese's last meeting. So a huge thank you to Tom Skreese for all his support and wonderful things that he's done in the last eight years for our town, for our administrators, for our students and our families. We are grateful for him and we wish him luck as he heads off to Westport, Connecticut. Graduation was on, was at the end of the week on Thursday, and it was an incredible event. I obviously have a senior daughter who graduated. And I have to say, the accommodations that were made for graduation were spectacular. They were special. They were memorable. We will never forget it. So a huge thank you to Madison Public Schools and to everybody who pulled together the town for graduation. It was, it was incredible. So that's it.
Great. Thank you, Scott. That was certainly a big event, I know. And a lot of hard work for a lot of people to organize and plan for that. And I think everybody seems like they had a great, you know, celebration, so.
The parade was incredible. The car parade downtown, it was really cool.
I'm hearing that that might become a new tradition, so.
Yes, indeed. I've seen a lot of chatter about that, for sure. It was pretty magical. A lot of the kids were hanging out of their sunroofs and it was neat. It was really neat.
Any other liaison updates?
I'm going to jump in here. I have two. The Government Studies Committee currently has a questionnaire out to the public and has asked me to encourage folks to go to the website, the town website for the Government Studies Committee, and share their thoughts about what they think Madison's town government should look like in the future. A second committee, our Island Avenue Study Committee, also has a questionnaire out asking the townspeople to share thoughts as to what they see the future of that building, of that property, to be. So we encourage people to share their thoughts. And you can find both questionnaires on the town website.
When did the Government Studies one go out? I've seen the Island one. I don't think I saw the.
I didn't see the Government Studies one either.
Lauren, did I jump the gun on it?
No, it went out last week, so you should have gotten the same update. You should have gotten the same type of newsletter. I got it both times.
I missed that, but I'll certainly, we should put that up on Facebook, for sure. And get that out there.
The Island one's been all over. I've seen that one plenty, but I've not seen the other one.
Yeah.
The Government Study only has five less responses right now than the Island School Committee survey. So it's definitely been out.
Okay.
That's great.
Well, I won't finish third.
I had the Madison Ambulance Association, and I think the only real update there is that, just to keep it fresh in everybody's mind, they continue to be reimbursed at a rate of about 51% of their expenses. So their, their need from the town is, is about the same as it was. It's about a 50-50 proposition.
Okay.
Are we, is there any, any sense on helping them and moving them forward, Bruce? I know there was a lot of discussion at one point.
Well, I think we're looking to get a study started. I don't know, Peggy, if you've got any more traction on, on getting that moving or not. But I think that was our next step.
Yeah, we've, we've talked to a few consulting firms, and that was probably in the March timeframe, and then COVID hit. And so I planned to, I've gotten several other studies launched. But that one is on, because we were looking at doing a broader public safety and encompassing.
Right, not just the ambulance, right?
And I think that, that might be a little problematic. We might have to just do ambulance. And that's what I want to get that question answered, because it's a little bit more challenging, I think, if we do this broader public safety one. And that's kind of what we learned in talking to some of the consultants. So it will be, I think, in the next couple of weeks, moving forward. So my intention is to have something still, you know, by, by budget time this year on the ambulance. Have they, have they talked at all about any issues recruiting?
So.
Keeping people.
The only numbers that I wrote down in my notes is that, that three times in the past month, they've had to take cars off the road, cars or ambulances. They've had to take cars off the roads for your shift because they could not get staff. What they do is they have unfilled positions, so they have unfilled shifts. And they go to the existing staff and, and ask that they work overtime, that they work an extra shift. And they're not always successful in doing that.
Okay. Yeah, and that's part of where all the whole pay scale discussion was important this last year. And we did provide for, starting in July 1, a very, you know, an increase, I know, from a pay increase, I think, in terms of what they were, or not, I mean, we give money, but we were recommending that we would be supportive, obviously, of anything that they were going to do from a compensation standpoint, so that should help. Okay, um, so I guess, any other selectman comments? So move on to citizen comments.
Yep, at this time, anyone from the public who would like to make comment can raise their hand, and I will allow you to speak. You do have several members of the public on tonight. But no one is raising their hand, Peggy, so you can move on.
Okay, there's another opportunity at the end of the meeting. Further on is the update on town beach policies and public safety concerns. And so I'll go back to screen sharing, just to give a quick update. I know Scott Erskine was going to be joining, and as well as Chief Drum. Hold on, let me get to, here we go, Beach and Rock. So, um, so I think the, you know, this is basically the same slides that I provided in early May. So it is kind of giving a comprehensive update on, you know, we have pretty much most of our outdoor facilities are open, including the fields. Now that organized sports are allowed to, some organized sports are allowed to start playing. You know, people are going to be out using all the different fields in town. So that's going to really pick up in terms of activity level. We'll talk about beaches in a little bit. Obviously, that's been a very busy place for us. We also opened up the playgrounds, but we're trying to make, make sure that, you know, we don't have a million kids climbing all over everything. So I know that the staff of the Surf Club is keeping an eye on that. And, you know, the town gym is something we're going to discuss this week, because that's an indoor facility. And so we need to talk a little bit more about what policies we even want to have for usage of that facility. Salt Meadow has been a topic as well. So when Chief Drum joins us, we'll talk a little bit more about some of the parking issues at Hammond Asset. And that's where we've had some problems with Salt Meadow. In terms of beach pass sales, I think we've sold well over 4,000 passes already. Stickers are now required as proof of residency, and you can buy them online. So if you go to the Beach and Rock website, you have the opportunity to purchase your stickers online. It'll be mailed to you. And while you're waiting for your stickers in the mail, you can take your receipt, which is some, a PDF that gets sent to you, you can print it out and use that as proof of purchase when you go to the gates. And then also, the Surf Club office has staff seven days a week to buy your stickers. And then there's still the good old-fashioned mail, mail in your application and a check route also. People still want to go that route.
You know, last year, there was a ton of confusion about using the Surf Club. Are we seeing a dramatic increase in use of the Surf Club office to buy your, your tickets?
I've heard it's been picking up, but Scott can talk to that. Is he on, Lauren? Scott Erskine?
I see his name.
Scott and Jack are on here as panelists, so they can start their video and speak.
Okay.
Hey, everybody.
Yeah.
Hey, Scott.
Hey, Scott.
Hey, the office has been doing great. The staff down there, we have, most of the time, we have two stations going on the Surf Club porch. And they're, they're just doing a phenomenal job in, in processing everybody. Still have a problem with people not knowing where the Surf Club office is. But they, they definitely, it has been a great addition to our sales, especially as we're not accepting the public in town campus. The online sales are going smooth. There are some, some hiccups with people not remembering usernames, passwords. And if their information is incorrect in their households, they do have to contact us for age, et cetera. But for the most part, I think, I think it's going a lot smoother than it did last year. Let's put it that way.
Scott, Scott, I have to say, I was, I was a trial run last week, and it was awesome. I mean, it worked great, and it remembered my cars. It didn't require me any additional information. I just had to put in my credit card and go. It was, it was very easy.
Froze. You froze, but on my end, you froze.
Could you hear what I said?
Um, yeah, that it was smooth.
Yeah, it was great. And it remembered everything. So I found it very simple.
Next, next year should be even better, because it'll be a renewal process. So any plate that was registered last, this year will be renewable. So.
Cool. And the new stickers, by the way, are very fancy. Like those.
Thanks.
No, I have to say that Scott worked hard with Artsicle in kind of coming up with a new alternative for online sales. And originally, we were just going to kind of do a pilot program later in the summer. And, you know, they, because we're trying to discourage, obviously, people standing in lines purchasing things, they, they moved this forward and made it happen more quickly than we had planned. So I think they've done a great job. So I'm going to compliment you guys on that.
Thank you.
And I, and I think the, you know, some of the other things that we're, we're looking into, the camp registrations has started, and actually started Monday, is the first week of the Camp of the Surf Club, correct?
Yes.
So our programs are up. People are registering, but there's places, there's spots open still. And, you know, they still, I think, you know, have protocols in place about, you know, how the kids, social distancing, keeping kids apart. Everything's in groups of 10 or under, and we're spread out at a lot more different facilities now. And I know Scott's been working on trying to get some other programs up also, possibly using some other buildings in town that we haven't used before for summer camp. So anything you want to add on the camps, Scott?
No, I encourage everybody to go to the website. I mean, it's not like in past years where there's a ton of programs, but, you know, we had to go through and make sure that we were able to control everything during this pandemic. So please, please visit and shop.
And we have a new idea that we're trying, drive-in movies. And the first one is going to be on June 26. It's kind of the test run. And that was something, I think, came off of Facebook. Somebody was suggesting it on Facebook at Salt Meadow. When we looked at Salt Meadow, the parking situation just didn't really work for parking and using a screen about where we'd have to set up with, you know, power and everything else. So Scott, you know, thought the Surf Club was going to be better. And they're showing a Despicable Me 3, right?
Yep. Carrie's, Carrie's running it, and she came up with the idea after looking at Facebook. And we hope everybody enjoys it. As, as we say, the lot, lot opens at 7:45. Movie's probably going to start at around 9, when it gets dark. But everybody's to stay in their cars. And we'll be parking people, so it's every other space. So we have good social distancing and bring your own snacks and enjoy the movie.
Scott, you have. I figured you'd be delivering snacks with your roller skates on, Scott.
And not in a processed lot, Scott.
Do you have a sense of how many cars you're going to be able to hold with that, with that spacing?
Well, that, that back, the, the big lot itself holds 250, so 125 cars. We'll be at half capacity between the two lots.
And Scott, you know, I didn't, we didn't really talk about logistics. How is that going to happen? Like, if you go to the Surf Club for dinner at like 5 o'clock and park, what happens?
We're gonna, we're gonna put up a notice that, you know, the parking lot is gonna, is available, but we are going to be holding movies. So we suggest, you know, most of it, most of it go around dusk. So we're hoping that those people vacate and those wanting to come in will, will be able to take the spaces. We're going to be trying to keep the smaller cars up front and keep like Scott's car towards the back, so it doesn't block the screen. But Peggy, your car can go up front, because it's one of the smaller ones that we have. And Bruce, you can be on your motorcycle if you want, but.
I was in the front row for graduation. I'm good.
There you go. But it should be an exciting, exciting thing. Hopefully, the weather cooperates and we'll have a really nice night, so.
And it's come, it's broadcast over your radio.
Right, we'll, we'll assign the FM station, let you know when it's, where it's going to be broadcast. And you just tune to that, and you have all the audio.
Very neat.
And then, and then also the Summer Concert Series. I think we're anticipating actually holding it on the green later in July because of the new gathering for outdoor events that kick in in July. I think you can have up to 500 people now, as long as they're spaced out, right, Scott? Is that?
Yeah, yes. Yep, space, it's space allowing, yes.
So we're, we're going to talk a little bit more about that. But I think the hope is that we can somehow still offer that series, just depending on, maybe we have to do a little bit of, you know, staking things, areas, or something similar to what we've done for other things, just to make sure that people aren't, you know, congregating in one area.
There's definitely more clustering in that. So I think using the entire green, just reminding people to use all the space as opposed to, you know, people tend to cluster up front.
Right, right. And we might need to mark areas, perhaps, up closer to the stage, just to make sure that, that, that doesn't happen.
And we, and we definitely have enough sound to carry to the back of the greens, so.
Right. So that's about kind of, and then just talking a little bit about the beach. It's obviously been a problem because of Hammond Asset, and I know Chief Drum is on here. We've had continuing issues with Hammond Asset closing now during the week at times. And, you know, we were having a lot of non-residents show up at our facilities during the week, which were not staffed with gate guards, because that had not, it was not budgeted for nor planned for to have gate guards there during the week. That problem, hopefully, in terms of our own beaches, will be solved, because we're going into full staffing now. And I actually went to the Board of Finance last week to discuss actually re. actually reinstating seven days a week. As, as some of you may recall, back in March, when they were kind of readjusting the budget, the Board of Finance reduced some of the funding into Beach and Rec to pull back two days a week on the gate guards and lifeguards, thinking that we don't even know if we're going to have a summer, right? This was back in March, and no one was really anticipating beach problems with COVID. I don't think we really were thinking that way at the time, understanding what would happen in terms of people's behavior. And so now I think we realize we really are going to need to have those gates staffed Mondays and Tuesdays, seven days a week. And so they seem generally supportive. They, we did a line item transfer to cover the cost through the end of July or June, and we'll likely continue that throughout July, because I think we're just going to have to keep, keep moving that forward. I also extended the executive order for residents only at our beaches to include Fridays, because that's been a big problem. Hammond Asset pretty much has been closing on Fridays as well as Saturdays and Sundays. And so going forward, you can only have residents Friday, Saturday, and Sundays, but then non-residents can use the beach by, by purchasing a parking pass Monday through Thursday. So there is an opportunity for non-residents to visit our beaches, but now we start charging like we have in the past usually. You know, you have to, you just can't do it on weekends anymore. So, so we should be set with staffing, right, Scott? I know you've been working on that.
Yes, we're, we're gonna have to add some additional lifeguards for the seven-day coverage, but my waterfront director is, has got some candidates, so.
Do we have a sense of how the compliance has gone for, you know, I mean, I guess it's only been a few days now, but we're, these days where we're only going to allow residents in is fine, but the days when we allow non-residents in, if they purchase a pass, are we policing that? Are we, are we looking to, to make sure that it's being complied with?
Well, with the, with the, with the gate staff in place, they technically really can't get past the gate without either paying or showing that they're a resident.
So they're purchasing at the gate? They're not going into the Surf Club office to purchase?
Correct.
Okay, okay.
It's a point, it's a point of sale.
And, and so we may end up having a little bit of a backup issue during the week on those days. That's something, it's, we're going to have to see what behavior is, because normally Mondays and Tuesdays are pretty quiet down at the Surf Club, right?
Right. But the, the point of sale does go fairly quickly, because we're, we're not registering the plate anymore. We are writing down the date that they're coming into the, into the thing, into this, into the beach. So they have it for the day. They can, they buy at the Surf Club, they can go to West or East or stay at the Surf Club, but it's pretty much, this is what it costs, credit card, we run the credit card, it's a touchscreen, and they're gone. So it should move fairly quickly.
Scott Erskine, what's been our experience in attracting lifeguards, gate attendants, and other staff people?
We're fully staffed out. And we do have some lifeguards in the wings that the waterfront director knows he's going to be reaching out to, to bulk up the staff for the set, bulk up the staff for seven-day coverage.
Scott, is that David? Who's your waterfront director?
David, yes.
Yeah, it's nice that he, I mean, he was a member of our swim team. So that's, he's got a great connection into the, the right gang. So that's.
And the colleges. So he's, he did a great job.
Yeah, awesome.
So I think that one thing that had come up about Salt Meadow, like, do we extend having gate attendants at Salt Meadow? And my understanding, according to Scott, is that because there's state money involved with the purchase of Salt Meadow, we cannot restrict access. So that's, I know some, some people in the public have reached out about that. Why don't you put a gate staffer there and just have, people need to have stickers to get into Salt Meadow, because we're having, you know, parking issues there on the weekends. But unfortunately, we can't limit it because of that restriction. So, which is different than our other facilities. So, so that's kind of the beach staffing situation. And now, and this just highlights what the pass costs are. This is what is, it's been on the website, and it's been, nothing's changed on this page, except for the fact that no non-residents or guest passes can be sold Friday, Saturday, Sundays, and holidays. And so I also just wouldn't mind if Chief Drum, I know, has been waiting patiently. Let me stop my share. And just talk a little bit, the chief and I had a call actually with some of the leadership at DEEP last week to talk about the problems with Hammond Asset, the traffic issues that it's causing. So Chief, you there? Jack?
He's on mute.
I just not, I just nudged him and asked him to start his video.
All right. Well, I know, we had a call with DEEP, and, and I think the, the takeaway that I had from that call was they didn't, had, really didn't have any idea that we were having all these walk-in issues. And, you know, because when we, we had a call with the commissioner, I mean, we had a call with the commissioner in May, and she said that they were going to be policing this, and walk-ins were not going to be allowed, right? And so that's why we shut Salt Meadow on the weekends. We just didn't want to have any way that people, we put the signs up for no parking, you know, we got prepared. And, you know, clearly, that's not been happening, because people are walking in all the time to that park. And so we were kind of caught in a situation where we didn't want to shut Salt Meadow down during the week also, because like, what's the point? We're closing one of our parks now? So just because to defray people? So anyways, I think we send a strong message to them, but that doesn't really solve the problem. You on now, Chief? Oh, there you are. We just can't hear you.
This better?
Yes.
Got you. I was on the iPad and it wasn't working, so I'm back to the phone. Hello, everybody.
Hello.
Jack?
So I thought, if you just want to give an overview of kind of what you're seeing out there, the situation, and, you know, how we're trying to mitigate it a little bit?
Well, I really wish the park would open up more parking spaces, but generally, we have a mid-morning closure, one in the afternoon. We're seeing on Fridays, even on Mondays, if it's a sunny day, a lot of the folks that can't park there will then try to find access to some of the side roads of, of town, or they'll go to Salt Meadow Park, which we now see the, the issue with the trash. We're mitigating it fairly well between the signs, the patrols. So most folks are finding, find another way, or they're just leaving. I think it's fairly well managed, considering the impact of COVID, and most certainly, the sunny days in the summer upon us. But I, I think it's okay for now. I just wish that we had more cooperation from the state in regards to Hammond Asset.
I, I think that's our biggest conundrum, is that, you know, they're still letting people walk in. And then secondly, they're still restricting the parking. And it seems a little unpredictable about what they're considering at full capacity. Scott, you had mentioned that you think sometimes it might depend on who's actually in charge that day, in terms of when they're going to close the park down. So, you know, we're, we requested that they get additional resources, you know, bring in other police resources to help stop wa, I said, if you get people out there on the weekend, stopping walk-ins and turning them away, maybe the message will get out that that's not, but they haven't been doing that as far as we're aware. No one's getting turned, turned away who are walking in, and they're coming in from all kinds of different locations, including the Shoreline Greenway Trail and, and well, Salt Meadow. So, so we're doing our best. And I think, you know, how we're going to handle Salt Meadow, just generally with the trash, I don't think we, we feel we should be closing it anymore, because that's just pushing the issue to somebody else, right? The, the people that are there. So we need some sort of strategy of either signage, telling people they cannot access the park from there, Hammond Asset, or, and making sure, you know, we, we have additional, that's included now. And I know Chief's Shoreline Patrol that we set up. But, you know, it's a struggle, because we can't man a gate there and just have full-time staff sitting at that park all the time either. So, so we're, we're trying to come up with some ideas, and creative ideas, just to kind of make the situation better.
It appeared that the, the senior director that was on the call, and we've talked to them several years in a row. I, I just think that they don't have the resources to apply to the park at this, at this juncture. And I, I don't think that they really wanted to tell us that, but I think if we could read between the lines of the last meeting, it's apparent that they don't have the resources. It's kind of like we're on our own. Maybe this is a battle during the winter months, with legislation's back.
Well, well, they're trying to hire more staff, but if they have the funding to hire more staff, why can't they then do what you were talking about, is getting temporary duty from the state troopers? You know, there's other ways to get enforcement in there.
I've done that in the past. I did that in my state police days. That's how we handled it, on a troop app. So I don't know. But we gave the senator, who was on the call, she took some copious notes. So I think maybe there might be some movement there.
So we're working on it. But I think generally, you know, I think all the hard work that the police is doing in terms of just keeping things moving along the beach roads and helping at the gates when necessary, has been going pretty smoothly. You know, I know there's always going to be an issue or a problem or backlog sometimes. I don't think we'll be able to solve every problem, but I think it's helped out a lot. And I don't know, does anybody have any more questions?
I know Lowry's been a big point of concern that I've seen on social media with people walking in. But obviously, you know, again, Scott, you and I have talked about this, we can't really stop people from walking in also. So.
And that, those fields are now going to need to be open because of the sports. So, so, you know.
Yeah, both, both Lowry and Salt Meadow are going to be, start being used by the youth sports. So.
And maybe what we do is carve out sections for athletic attendees only or something, you know, that might help a little bit. Do some carving out, and just saying, you know, if you're going to an event, you can park here, otherwise you can't. Some signage. But I just don't know if we're going to have the resources to actually have people there, right?
Right.
So, so anyway, so any other questions for Scott or Chief Drum? Good? Okay. All right. I guess we can move on. And thank you for joining tonight. I appreciate it, both of you. And Scott, you're here for some other things too, right?
Yeah, I am.
There's, there's a, the next item, actually, Chief Drum, is about your special appropriation. So, so we move on to the next item on the agenda. Discuss and take action to approve a special appropriation request from police services in the amount of $32,478 to fund special duty wages.
Second.
All right, discussion.
Probably explaining the, Jack, were you about to explain that, what the, what these ones were really for?
This is, every year towards the, the last pay period, what we have is, this is the highway construction projects, that we, we put X amount of dollars in there, a smaller amount, roughly 30,000. And what we do is we, when AT&amp;T or some contractor hires a police officer or the vehicle, we charge them a premium, we charge for the officer's time and a half, we charge for use of the vehicle, we charge for insurance and, and for workers' comp. Then it's built, and the money is returned, it comes back, I believe, to the general fund. So this is more a, to bring it to zero for pre-audit post-July 1. We do it every year this way. We've discussed doing it in many different ways, but always seems to end up, this is how we do it, you know?
Specifically, this is not an over-budget expense. This is not an unplanned expense. This is simply an accounting mechanism for us.
Yes, it is. Spot on. That's exactly what it is. And generally, we bring in, the town makes 20, sometimes $30,000 on it by year end.
Well, because I wondered, why wouldn't we treat this with like a Beach and Rec program or something, where, you know, you hire a contractor, and then you get a, you know, revenue collection or whatever from that, so that you're only dealing with a net amount. But that's a conversation with Stacy, right? I mean, we do it in other types of parts of.
We budget the expense, but we don't budget the revenue. And then, once the year is expired, we, or we get to this point in the year, we've collected the revenue, and we then go ahead and apply it to offset the expense. So we have a good sense, based on history, what the, of these special duty wages are going to look like, in, in sort of a 50,000-foot view, we budget that expense, knowing that there will be an offsetting income.
And the income's.
We can't budget it.
Yeah.
And the income's generally approximately 30%.
Yeah. Okay. So, I mean, I, I know I'm familiar with this. And, and this went through Board of Finance already, right?
Yes.
Yeah. Yeah. Because I, we did a lot of the, when I was at the Board of Finance, I mean, there's a bunch of this stuff. So, I mean, I'm good to vote. Is everybody okay voting? Okay, all in favor of approving the special appropriation request from the police services in the amount of $32,478 to fund special duty wages? Say aye.
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 Okay, opposed, abstained. Okay, great. Thank you, Jack, very much.
You're welcome.
The next item on the agenda is discuss and take action to approve a one-year contract for the collection of facilities, refuge, and recycling for town facilities and containers to Hometown Waste LLC Switzer Waste Removal. Can I have a motion?
So move.
Second.
Okay, great. So.
Were there three, three bids collected for this, I'm assuming?
Well, so basically, we had this on our agenda at the last meeting, and it was for a five-year contract, okay? And it was a little confused, because we only had one bid. And Bill went through the normal bidding process. But it turns out, it really isn't a five-year contract. It's a one-year contract, because the town has the ability to terminate, terminate it at the end of the year. The problem that I think in talking to Scott specifically is this, this includes the school waste removal, as well as the town. And the town one jumped up a lot. And so there's reasons behind that, which Scott can talk to, but the thought was, we do not want to commit to a, a five-year thing, so we can just renew it for a year. Get us through, because this contract goes into place July 1. And so we don't really have a lot of wiggle room in terms of trying to rebid the whole thing, and maybe get some other bidders in here. We just don't have the time. So we thought, let's just renew it as a one-year contract. Whereas before, when this was done, it was done as a five-year contract. And then hopefully, we can find, figure out a way to, to get the cost down, because it jumped by like, what is it, 20, $20,000 or something, Scott, from what we had previously paid for the service?
22, too.
And can you just explain briefly why, that, what it was really, it was downtown, right?
Um, when I talked to the owner of Switzer or Hometown, they, it's the downtown district that was completely miscalculated, didn't realize the amount of labor-intensive work that it was with the approximately 22 barrels, you know, the garden, garden, garden-topped trash receptacles. Try, it's one driver, he has to pull up, stop, get out of his truck, empty the barrel, get back in his truck, move to the next one, and it takes time. And we are, from Memorial Day to Labor Day, we're seven-day operation, where they're supposed to be picked up every morning for the summer season. So he re, he ended up recalculating, and, I mean, the contract this year was 35, 720, and I had budgeted 38. And in the, I believe in the 2021, I put in 40,000, and the bid came in at 58. So we're $22,280 over, over cost. But in the past, we've tried to go out to other vendors, and we've gotten limited responses back. So we don't know if it's the downtown district that's causing all of it, or. So we don't know if it's the downtown district that's causing all of it or what. So I think if we go the one year.
It froze?
Inside and try to catch it and see what we can get.
Well, and one idea that I think you had mentioned was at Guilford that actually just purchased a truck and started servicing themselves.
Yeah, they, they did go and purchase that. Like, I want to see how they make out for the year before we consider that. They had the, they didn't, they even had in the downtown district what a lot of us have at our homes, the big pails. The purple one for recycling and the green for trash. Well, we have even smaller ones downtown, which are the regular 30-gallon galvanized cans in those containers. So, but Guilford residents did not like the looks of those pails in their downtown center. So they regrouped and they ended up purchasing a.
So.
I'm watching to see how they're doing.
Well, I think that we just, I mean, this is something that towns across the state of Connecticut are seeing huge increases in their dealing with trash, basically. It's an ongoing problem. And, I mean, luckily, you know, we don't offer municipal service, fortunately, because that's something that I know some of the other towns in our region have been really struggling with, because the costs have gotten astronomical with, especially on the recycling side, just because China's not taking stuff anymore. So, but nonetheless, this is quite a big number. And so we just want to take some time and think about long-term solutions. And then just to get the one-year done, because we got to have, it's our busy season. We got to have a contract in place to get the trash moved.
Even the Big Bellies are giving us an issue where people are trying to put pizza boxes, et cetera, in them and it blocks the trash. So it ends up spilling. The pizza box is locking it. The bags, the register is not saying it's full because the trash isn't getting into the Big Belly in order to compact. The boxes are stopping everything. So we just have to try to educate, no pizza boxes, please. And hopefully it gets better, but we may be jockeying some of the Big Belly stations around to try to avoid that. And we may end up putting other trashcans in that area to try to handle that and talk to Hometown in order to pick up.
Do you expect to combine the contract for the Board of Ed and the town together when we put this back out? So to pool our purchasing power?
I think that would best serve us, yes, because that's, I mean, it's funny, the school fees didn't go up that much, right? And that's why, you know, it did go up, definitely, but it wasn't as dramatic a level that this one did.
Couple of thousand dollars, but.
Yeah. Yeah, so I think we just got to figure out how we want to approach it, but you know, right now, but this is for, this is for the school as well, right? The two-year, the one-year contract, because we're authorizing both. This is the entire contract and it includes the school facilities, what we're approving tonight. So this is only going to be a one-year contract for the schools as well.
Is that the case?
Yes.
And do we split the cost with the schools?
Yeah, it was in the attachment. We've got, we've got both costs. I just figured we were voting on the town side, not the Board of Ed side, that they had already, they had already voted on that.
This is, this has always come through here from what Lauren had said, right, Lauren?
But in this particular instance, now you are just voting on the town side.
Well, I thought that we handled this, signed the contract for both, so I'm confused then, because why was Bill presenting last time on this then?
So in the past, it was done as one motion at the Board of Selectmen level. He'll does not want it done that way. He wanted it done as just the town side going forward. And you are just approving the one-year contract for the town.
Was there a reason why we're splitting it up like that?
So what I have been told is that it was never, it never should have been approved together, but it does go out to bid together to hopefully get us the best price. But that the contracts are actually individual. But when it's, when it's put out to bid, the RFP document asks for two separate contracts.
But how is then, because I mean, I guess I didn't understand that that was what, how this was being handled this time versus what we had on our agenda last time, because now you've put us in a position where our contract is significantly smaller and we're going out to bid on it.
It always was two contracts. So nothing has changed.
But I'm just saying.
Sign them at the same time?
Yeah.
Yeah. The RFP remains the same, except that when we go out next year, the RFP will just be for the town side.
Right.
So.
Right. So, well, I think we have to address this tonight, but that's an offline discussion. I don't understand, you know, maybe I don't understand what the benefits are to breaking apart versus keeping together. I would think you get a benefit to keeping them together, but, so are they approving a five-year contract with Switzer?
As far as I know, that is what they did, but I'm actually online right now trying to find their minutes.
Okay.
From their last meeting.
Okay. I mean, I think what happened here, like, is Lauren was basically doing what had been done five years ago. And we started with that premise and then as we dug into it, realizing some of that didn't make the most sense. So, but you know, if we have a purchasing agent next year, they can handle all of this.
Some help there. I think that would be useful.
So, but, and if, so anyways, I mean, I'm comfortable approving this because we have to have something in place to get the, to get things, you know, taken care of over the summer. Is everybody comfortable voting on this? Any more questions?
Yep.
Okay. All right, all in favor of approving the award of a one-year contract for the collection of facilities, refuge and recycling for town facilities and containers to Hometown Waste Switzer Waste Removal, say aye.
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 Okay, opposed. Okay, good. All right, we've got that done, but Scott, let's definitely focus on this, figuring this out. Because that's, that's a lot of money that we're eating this year on this.
Absolutely.
We got to figure another way to handle this, so. Okay, the next item on the agenda is.
Thanks for all your efforts, by the way, Scott. Appreciate everything.
And Scott, you can stay on. Discuss and take action to approve accepting a grant in the amount of $5,000 from the Irwin C. Bauer Charitable Trust to be used for habitat exploration programs and interpretive.
Moved.
Second.
Okay, great, discussion. So Scott, if you just want to highlight again what this is for, which we're grateful to receive, as always. You want to.
Not me, Scott, you, Scott.
Sorry, my internet connection is unstable, so I missed half of that conversation. This is an annual grant and the trust has transformed with their amounts of money that they're distributing. And this is the max amount that they are allowing under their restructuring, because they're trying to build up scholarship reserves for agricultural use. But we're fortunate enough to have received this and it'll be put to good use towards helping with the nature programs that we offer at Bauer Park and marine biology, et cetera, throughout the community, Rockland.
Scott, what has been the size of this grant in the past?
Um, we have gotten up to 29,000.
And the fact that this is 5,000, what is the implication for our programs and services?
We're restructuring the programs to be more in line and self-supporting as our other programs are. We were heavily relying on the grant and we kept on trying to wean ourselves off of it. And this is just putting that in the forefront, where the programs have to be self-supporting, like our others.
And so that means that the pricing is going up, right, for some reason, for the public? And this is more the reason the grants have been reduced, I think this started last year. Well, I don't know what it was three years ago, but I'm just saying we've seen a reduction over the last couple of years. And part of that is with the new management of the trust. They want to basically kind of scale back in terms of what their distribution is going to be in order to make some corrections to the trust. And then, so a large part of the grant this year, and I was on the board, I sit on the board now as for selectwoman, goes to scholarships and that's becoming like the first, they give out about $25,000 a year in scholarships. And that scholarship kind of is the first grant that they give. And then after that, they probably had another 20 or $30,000 to provide to the community this year. And they, they're trying to spread it out to as many organizations as they can and kind of get some new organizations in the pipeline also. So the town, I think, we're, you know, grateful, obviously, to receive the $5,000, but understand that, you know, it's not a reliable source, so to speak, going forward. But I think the hope is they'll increase their distributions again. They're just, they're spending the next couple of years trying to restructure a little bit. So I guess with that, I guess, all in favor of approving of accepting a grant in the amount of $5,000 from the Irwin C. Bauer Charitable Trust to be used for habitat exploration programs and interpretive? It sounds kind of odd. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right, great. And thank you again to the charitable trust. I mean, it's been a wonderful support and they do a lot of good things in our town and we're always grateful for whatever we can receive from them, so.
Huge thanks.
Thank you.
Okay, all right, thanks. Next on the item, discuss and take action to award the contract for removal of brush stumps, logs and wood from the town's facility on Ridge Road. Can I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Okay, and is John on here?
He is, and I just moved him over.
Okay. And this was one that, I know we got a lot of bids on, right? There was like a whole thing of different bids.
Yes, I sent it out earlier and the motion should actually be to award it to Ridge, the low bidder, Running Brook Farms LLC.
So amended.
Sorry, okay.
Thank you.
So I'll make the motion amended.
Thank you.
Somebody want to second it?
Second.
Second, okay. Okay. And basically, this is, every year, we try to just clean up and get rid of more and more stuff at the stump dump. And if you've been down there recently, there's a lot there that needs to get taken care of. And so this was this year's bid. Oh, Rob's on, Rob? Rob Russo? Hello?
Here's John.
Okay.
They're coming. Nice, Rob, you out on the baseball field?
I am at the, I'm on the beautiful walkway here.
Ah, okay. Well, we never had that grand opening, did we, for that?
Yeah, we just did. I think we just did. And John, you look fantastic too, but not as, not as good a location. You're on mute still. You're on mute.
John.
Okay.
Yeah, yes.
This happened last time. When I came up, I, I lost the connection somehow. I missed the item 10, removal of brush stumps and.
We're in it. We're in it right now.
That's where I'm now.
Okay, great.
Yeah, so.
We're in the discussion already. We made a motion.
Yeah, just real quickly give a summary of what this is for then, and I think we're good.
Okay, great. So we, the town received bids for the removal of brush stumps, logs and wood at our facility at Ridge Road. We had a mandatory pre-bid meeting at which ten contractors voted for that. And we received eight bids for the project, so there was a lot of interest. And we would like to recommend to the Board of Selectmen to award the contract to Running Brook Farms LLC from Killingworth in the amount of $22,500. And that's it. We, they're relatively local there in Killingworth. We did receive a good reference, a good recommendation from the town of Westbrook.
We didn't use them before though, John?
No, they have bid on the project before, but have not been awarded the contract in the past. So this, this is the first experience that I've had with them.
John, is there any particular explanation for the wide disparity in the bid prices?
You know, it's all over the place. The high, I don't know the answer to that. You know, it was, it was a really good turnout. The high bid here of 240,000 is a company that we've used in the past. So I'm not sure why they put that, that high bid in there.
Did it say Bruce Wilson next to it?
Low bidder, you know, they're, they're local, so their hauling costs are going to be, are going to be significantly less. That's the only really explanation I have. And he had kind of alluded to having, wanting to really sharpen his pencil on this one, because I guess he, he had lost a prior bid in another town or something like that, so. But gosh, yeah, the bids are all over the place. 22,000 was actually a nice surprise.
Well, we can offset that against the trash contract then.
Yeah, there you go.
Maybe they should all get, it'd be nice to get eight trash hauler bids, but. So any other questions for John? No?
Nope.
Good, okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. All right, thank you, John.
Thanks, John.
The nicest part, seeing that place get cleaned up more.
Yeah, I know.
And then we got another one for you, right? Okay, number 11, discuss and take action to award contract for pavement management inspection services to the low bidder Beta Group. Have a second or a motion?
I'll make the motion if you want.
Okay, all right. And this is, we're updating that study, basically, right? That was gone a while ago, correct?
Is the road, the road study?
Yeah.
Yes, that's, that's correct. Actually, Rob, Rob was going to speak to this, but I can as well. I don't know if you wanted to switch. He, he took that one. He put it out to bid. So you probably know some of them more details.
Well, we got three, we've got two bids, right?
We, yeah, so we have.
And Beta's a group that had done it before, right?
Correct, correct. So we have three bids total, including Beta's. Beta put in a bid for this to resurvey the roads. And then in order to, you know, fulfill our procurement requirement, went out and received two more bids. And if I can find, find that. So Beta was the low bidder of the three. It was all pretty tight range there. Their price is 11,500 for this, the survey work of determining road conditions. And so our recommendation would be to hire Beta Group to resurvey the roads. One good thing there is that we are familiar with their work and we're happy with the work that they've done for the town in the past.
What's the timeline on this, guys?
I'm not sure. I haven't been speaking with Beta Group directly. I think that they're available very soon to start this work, you know, summer. That's the plan. At this point, you know, we've, we've pretty much selected our road program. At this point, you know, we've, we've pretty much selected our road program for the year. So even if they start in midsummer or late, you know, early fall, we'll have the results for next year. So, yeah. Not too concerned, but I don't know the, I don't know their exact start time.
Rob, I know Rob's on. Rob, did you remember any of the details?
So I know their window of completion is going to be about four to six weeks to complete the work. And I think when I spoke with the, their project manager there, I think like John was saying, I think they'll be able to start probably midsummer. So basically, four to six weeks from their commencement date would be, we will be able to get the existing conditions report. So I would expect that maybe September, early fall.
Okay, that's helpful.
Yeah, I think.
I guess the, 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 kind of my brain is going to, is this going to be in time for CIP? So. Which it sounds like it would be.
Yeah.
If it's September.
Yeah, I mean, ideally.
Bruce, I mean, that'd be a great input for us as we get into CIP.
Yeah, we're gonna have a lot of studies to, to help. Here, hopefully. Hopefully. I don't know if that's good or bad, depending on what they say. Okay, are we good voting? Okay, all in favor of awarding the contract for pavement management inspection services to the low bidder, Beta Group, say aye.
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 Okay, great. All right. Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Agenda to discuss and take action on a resolution confirming commitment and participation in a regional household.
Bruce, Bruce, we can't hear you. You're like, you sound like you're in a tunnel. Can you speak, can you try to speak up?
Yeah, he's reading this, right? You're doing the hazardous waste thing?
That's, yes, that's exactly. I'm motioning that we move the agenda to discuss and take action on a resolution confirming commitment and participation in a regional household hazardous waste collection center.
Second.
Okay. And this is a, and I appreciate, because I totally forgot about that too. I had it sitting here. That is. Lauren, if you want to talk about this, this is an annual contract, right?
Right, yeah. Well, we can just vote on the opening the agenda and then we can make the.
Okay, all in favor of opening the agenda?
Aye. Aye.
Okay, great.
Aye.
Okay, now, discuss and take, then, now, can we have a motion to discuss and take action?
So moved.
Okay. All right. So now, discussion. Yeah, this got pulled in this afternoon. This is a, my understanding is an annual thing that we do every year that allows our residents to participate in this. I'm forgetting what this is about. Lauren, can you?
This is the Household Hazardous Waste Collection Program that we run. The contract is for two years. This will go through July of 2022. And it's something that we offer to residents usually at the end of the summer that they can bring their hazardous waste down to a certain drop-off location and have it recycled. It saves us from having it dumped semi-illegally at the bulky waste site.
Okay.
I'm going to propose a small modification to the agreement. In the resolution, it references July 1, 2017 to July 30, 2020. And then.
Sorry, I, I thought I sent you guys the updated one. It should be 2020, 20, sorry, 2023.
Right. So, so yeah, so the final draft should read July 1, full title through June 30, 2023.
Correct.
So this is a three-year contract?
Yeah, sorry, it's three years.
Okay.
This is something that normally is brought to you by the health director. And it came to us this year, it came to us this year in the middle of the pandemic response. And Trent and I thought that there was some language in, in the draft that was originally sent to us that wasn't consistent with prior year agreements. So we just had a little bit of wordsmithing going on. And that's why it was brought to you today, because we need to get it approved before the 30th.
Okay, all right. So yeah, this is the one where, because I remember in the budget discussion, people were really using this, right? We included.
Yes.
Or something and it became very popular, so.
Yeah, people call me all year long and ask me when this program is being run for the year.
Okay, so I didn't realize it was actual contracted thing. So, okay. All right. And there is a cost associated with this that we do budget for every year.
Yes.
Lauren, when will it be run this year?
I don't know because of COVID.
I see. Good answer.
It's kind of the status quo answer.
Yeah.
All right. I guess so, all in favor of, I don't have the wording in front of me, of approving a contract. What are we saying here? Or a town of, all in favor of, do you have, is it in the agenda? It's not on the agenda. You emailed this to us, right?
Yeah.
Okay.
Commitment and participation in a regional household hazardous waste collection center.
Okay.
I work, Lauren.
That works.
Okay. Yeah, I just don't have the email in front of me, so I apologize. And so amended, right, with the dates?
Yep.
Okay. All in favor? Aye?
Aye.
All right. Opposed? Great. Okay, sorry about that one. That was a little confusing. You have, you have the updated one then, Lauren. All set?
Yeah, and that'll go to Nancy tomorrow to sign.
Okay. And that's to the town clerk?
Yeah, the town clerk certifies the resolution to say that she's certifying that you all voted to approve it and that it is recorded in the minutes of tonight's meeting.
Okay. Okay, all right. Moving on, number 12, discuss and take action to approve a line item transfers totaling $167,382.3.
So moved.
Second.
Okay. So.
What are these for?
The biggest bunch is for an overtime deficit. 138,000. Does that look right?
Yes, it's for the police department. And Jack is still on the meeting if you want me to move him over if you have any questions.
This is basically moving money from the, the wages that weren't used, right? And it's moved, it's basically transferring from the fact.
Inside his own budget, right?
Yes, all of these requests are within the department budget that they're coming from.
But he's basically taking money from on hired, people who have not been hired, right? I forget what it's called. And he's shifting it over to pay for overtime, correct?
Yes.
And, and this was, I know I was at the board of finance meeting on this, so I'm just looking for my notes on the details of this. And I think this included, did this include the COVID money as well, overtime COVID?
Yes.
Yeah, I believe it's in the notes.
Yeah, it's in the note at the bottom.
Yeah, that's where I, I don't, I don't have the right sheet for this one. Was this part of the packet that got circulated?
Yes.
All right. I don't know why I don't have it. I have my board of finance note. But basically, it was about $25,000, right, that were associated with COVID specifically overtime? And we, we have a, a hope that that is all going to be reimbursed anyway from, through FEMA as well as money that comes from the state. So FEMA will reimburse up to 75%. And then the additional 25%, we're hoping will come from the state. It's going to take a while. It'll be a long process, but we're hopeful that, that, that portion at least will be, you know, reimbursed to us. So, any more questions on this? And this is kind of end of year cleanup, just for people watching, that there's a lot of these line item transfers. We did a few, I think, before, didn't we, at our last meeting? And then the board of finance met and did a bunch. And this is just finishing up for the rest of the year.
Yes, all of these were approved by board of finance on the 17th. They're just ones that came to us in between your June 8 meeting and the board of finance on the 17th.
Okay, any more questions?
Nope.
No? Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay, great. All right. Thank you. So that transfer is complete. Nice to get a lot of this stuff done. Okay, number 13, appointments and resignations.
Do you want me to make the motion?
Yep.
I'd like to make a motion to appoint Christina Seawi to the Board of Police Commissioners for a term to expire January 1, 2022.
Second.
Okay, great. And I don't know if Christina is still on the line with us, because she's, I know she was trying to join, but this has obviously turned into a little bit longer meeting. Is she there, Lauren?
There she is.
Yeah, I just moved her.
Okay, great. All right.
There she is.
Right. You, you stayed on.
You're still, you're still on mute.
You're muted.
Better?
There you go.
Yeah.
Gotcha.
All right, great. Well, we just, I apologize. You had to sit through a long and boring. Maybe you, hopefully, were doing more productive things while our meeting was going on.
I was cooking some food with my husband for my mom.
Nice. Sounds better than that.
Great. Well, Christina, just for the audience, we'll be taking Steve Shaw, who had to resign, just for kind of personal reasons. And so she'll be stepping into his shoes to fill his term, which expires 2022. And we're excited to have, have her join us.
I'm excited to be here. Thank you guys so much for the appointment. I appreciate it. Looking forward to it.
Good. Well, it'll be an interesting time, obviously, to be in the police commission, but I think it'll be a great experience. And I know I spent three years serving. It's great working with the chief and our current chair at Dowling and everybody on the commission. So, so the public is aware that any traffic complaints or ticket problems, you have a new person to approach. And I'll start copying it all on all my complaint emails that I receive. So, but, so all in favor of appointing Christina Seawi to the Board of Police Commissioners for a term to expire January 1, 2022, say aye.
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 Okay, great. Well, congratulations, Christina. And so the other step you have to do is you just have to get sworn in with our town clerk, Nancy Mertucci. And so you have to do that prior to attending any meetings.
Okay.
And so Lauren can send you the details. I don't know, Lauren, are they doing that by phone now? Is she allowed to do it by phone or does she have to come into the office?
No, they are doing it remotely now. So you can do it over the phone or they can send you a PDF form for you to sign and then you can scan it back to them. But if you just go to the town clerk's office tomorrow, they'll, they'll work if they're with you.
Yeah. Okay, great. They'll make an appointment too, if you'd like to come in. I mean, it's, it's.
It's kind of fun. I videoed mine when I did it. You put your hand up, the whole deal.
Yeah, I'll send that. Thank you. Lauren, if you can send me that info, that would be great.
You'll get a letter from me tomorrow that just says what action was taken tonight and all the contact info for the town clerk.
Okay, great. Thank you, guys.
Thanks for stepping up.
Okay, great. Thank you. Thank you, Christina. Appreciate you stepping up.
Thank you.
All right. And moving on to the next item, which I'm realizing I don't have, I'm not very organized tonight, is the actual declaration. But discuss and take action to declare a local civil preparedness emergency for an additional 21-day period from July 22 to July 23.
So moved.
Second.
Okay. And once again, for the public, if you've been attending any board of selectmen meeting in the last two months, this has been a regular item on our agenda. Our charter requires that we continue to declare an emergency, a state of emergency for 21 days and then expire. So we're just renewing it again because our next meeting is not going to be held until after the 23rd in July. We just have one meeting in July. And, and basically, all it does is continue to put us in a state of emergency similar to what the state of Connecticut is in. And allows us to kind of mirror what's going on in terms of FEMA. We talked earlier about getting reimbursed for certain costs that were occurring. And also, we're still not back to normal. We still are in a state of emergency. We're operating under a number, a number of executive orders that the governor has issued as well as executive orders that the town has issued. And we're still not fully operational in terms of our town governments. So I think it's important to keep that in mind, that the public health emergency is still there. COVID is still prevalent. And we need to be mindful of that. But this is also just a formality to continue to operate through our emergency operations here for the next 21 days. So with that, any more discussion on board's part?
Nope.
Okay. All right, great. All in favor of declaring a local civil preparedness emergency for an additional 21-day period from July 2 to July 23, say aye.
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 Okay, opposed? Nope. Great. All right. And number 15. Are there any?
There are none.
Okay, great.
Nice. 60.
Citizens' comments.
Are there any members of the public that would like to give comment? Looks like you just have one public member right now.
Okay.
No one is raising their hand. Peggy, I think you can move on.
All right. So I guess, couldn't. Push into adjourn.
So moved.
All right. All in favor? Yes. Let's adjourn. Meeting is adjourned. Thank you very much, guys.
Thanks, everybody.
Appreciate it.
See ya.
Safe. We'll see you next month.
Bye, Lauren.
Good night.
Thanks for everything, Lauren. Bye.
You're welcome. See ya.